Well, it seems like their schedule is tight.
Okay. All right, it's eight o'clock. I think we'll, we'll jump right into day two of our city council budget tours. And just to kind of kick it off and give us a preview of what we can expect today, I'll have Assistant City Manager Tom Joyce come up and give us a preview.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, council candidates. Let me go ahead and hand out our tour. So that's going to be the tour part today. Time to just want to get you out and, and, and see, you know, some things and where we've been spending our money in 23 and 24, what we plan on doing 25. You know, a lot about Public Works is, I say, things, right? Horizontal especially. We forget about a lot, some vertical, but it's really all about people. So I've been here about 100 days, and I'd like to just, a quick assessment. We have great people. A lot of them are back here. They've been patient with me, as I've learned, right? So with oversight of the engineering department, Public Works, a big shout out to Jason Sorenson, like for the last six-plus months, dual-hatting as the utilities director and the operations director. Recently hired Brian Banfield. Brian, day two on the job as our Public Works Operations Director. But again, as we get out and about today, you're going to see not just some, you know, some quality equipment and vehicles that we've purchased with our allocated funds over the last couple of years, but the people, right? It's all about the people. Like today, right, our people are out in this mess. Kevin's people are out in this mess, you know, like he just said, you know, a 200-pound sofa is now 600 pounds, right? You'll see on Jason's slides, a little, a little, you know, call out to Public Works as first responders. They're the quiet professionals. You in this city, right, that have, you know, born and bred and lived here, you, you saw it firsthand in 2011 in the response to the flood, right? That immediate consequence management. But since then, right, it's, it's more than that, right? You know, it's preparing for the future, mitigating for the future. So Jason's going to talk a little bit about MI-6 and MI-7 with our flood control projects. So you can kind of get a little bit of update of that. You'll also get an update with the Northwest Area Water Supply System, where we're going with that. But again, you know, I just reemphasize, it's people first. I got a prop here. The early, you know, before I took the job, I'm, I'm asking Harold, you know, it's all, to me, it's, yes, if you know HR and if you know the budget, you can kind of figure everything else out. So he goes, "Yeah, it's online," right? So, you know, so I go, "Finance Director," you know, and "Thanks, Dave." You know what? It's like 168 pages in this thing. But on page three and four are the most important pages. So if you haven't looked at it, page three and four, it's the most important pages. It's our mission, serving our neighbors, building our community with pride, and our values that we're getting after, which is, you know, the acronym PRIDE, so professionalism, responsibility, integrity, dedication, excellence. And that's what we're in pursuit of, is excellence. So I appreciate you having your trust in us and our teammates, because that's what we're getting after. I personally am all about customer service and, and focus on continuous process improvement. So, you know, if we don't get it right the first time, we're going to try, try again, right? It's like the man in the arena, right? We're going to, we're going to get up, we're going to dust ourselves off, and we're going to learn from it. And when we do, when we don't get it right, we're going to admit it, and we're going to learn from it and move on. So. And then the next page, and this is, you know, this comes from our council members, the Magic City aspirations. So when you ever see a council memo, where, where everything we do, we want to nest it to what you have just determined are the Magic City aspirations. So that's what we're driving forward. Unless you have any questions of me, I'm going to hand it off to Lance first, our city engineer. He's going to hit on some hot topics, and then Jason Sorenson's going to touch on a few things. And then we plan on jumping on the bus about nine o'clock and taking on that tour that you have in front of you.
Are there any questions of Tom? Thank you, Tom. Thanks for kicking it off. It works. First time I've used my, my new equipment in this room. Okay, well, thank you for taking time to be with us today. I know it's a big-time commitment on all of your part to, to go through all these budget tours. So we want to make sure that we're providing you information that you need to, to make decisions and, and be informed. So if there's any follow-up that you need after all of this that we provide to you today, please ask. We're here to, to try to help you. I wanted to touch just a little bit on our people. So I am backed by a tremendous team. Our Assistant City Engineer Emily Hiddle, she can't be here with us today. She's on leave still. But she is just a brilliant, brilliant engineer, very detail-oriented. And our project manager Jesse Hoffert and, and his staff help manage all of our field construction projects here at the City of Minot. They do a tremendous job. And with me here today is Stephen Juris, our traffic engineer. Stephen, hands down, one of the best traffic engineers in the state of North Dakota, probably in the upper Midwest. We are blessed to have him at the City of Minot. If you've ever talked with him, he's just a wealth of knowledge when it comes to traffic engineering. So two tremendous assets for us to have at the City of Minot. I like to think of the engineering department as the city's think-tank. We hire problem solvers. That's what we do as, as engineers. That's how we're trained. That's how we think. And that's how I would like the, the council and, and management staff to think of us. And that's really our mission. That's, that's how we set the bar in our department is, is, is the problem solvers for the city, so. The next slides that I'm going to go through with, with you all are really some hot-button issues that, that we're trying to troubleshoot here at the city. And it's really ties back to the community survey results. So the, the citizens of Minot wanted, from, from what we've seen, wanted us to focus on additional pavement markings, signal management, and traffic flow, pavements and sidewalks. So all the other items within our department budgets and traffic engineering services, all those line items really come back to, to feed into these major topics. So, you know, staff salaries and benefits, obviously, for our people, but things like software and training and all those things really, they really come back to, to help with these initiatives. So when I go through these slides, know that all that stuff is there, but, but it really feeds into trying to solve some of these issues. So within the traffic department, which, which Stephen's group manages, our, our pavement markings, we stripe about 150 miles of, of pavement markings within the City of Minot. You can see them here on this map, which is all sorts of different types, from paint all the way up to what we call tape, which is basically like a, like a flexible tape that gets grooved and glued into the pavement. Each has different lifespans. When I started here about 15 years ago, we did almost everything exclusively with paint. They'd come in and they'd stripe twice a year, spring and fall, because it would wear off so quick. And by springtime, you know, with pavement maintenance and, and winter plowing, there was really nothing left. So we've almost gotten away from that, not only because of price, but just because of quality. And we've gone almost exclusively now to epoxy paint where we can. Higher cost, but you get a better product. So you can see us try to transition away from that, but one of the, the issues that we're having is, is we're just, we're barely making it through our long lines with the budget that we have. We spend approximately, right now, $230,000 within the traffic budget, but that's also supplemented by our street, our street construction budget. So last year, as a, for instance, we probably spent close to about $900,000 total in, in pavement markings within the city. As a, for instance, if we mill off, excuse me, if we mill off pavement with a milling overlay project, the street improvement project will re-stripe that, that roadway. That's part of the project budget for that. It doesn't come out of the traffic budget. So what we're trying to do is, is over time, we need to increase the traffic striping budget to try to account for the cost of inflation. And we need to get back to these things, where we're striping arrows, stop bars, and crosswalks, because this is the area that we're really falling short. We're just getting by with striping our long lines, but we're not getting to these things. And I think the public's starting to notice that, and they're asking for more service in those areas. With the, the calculations that we've done, we probably need to go from about $230,000 to about $300,000 to start meeting that threshold. So we need to start either ratcheting up to that or getting up to that number as soon as we can to start making an impact to meet the expectation that's being requested. Traffic signal upgrades, we made in the last several years a tremendous impact on getting our signals upgraded. You can see in the pictures here, some of our, our equipment. In the lower corner there, that's actually a picture from 2012 Easter weekend. I don't know if, if all of you remember, but we actually had a signal tip over and fall across 16th Street. Luckily, I think it was Easter Sunday, so everyone was at home, but if this would have happened at five o'clock on a, on a Tuesday, we could have had a, a serious issue. This prompted us to, to start a signal management program, where we commissioned a study to do non-destructive testing on all of our signals, to get a baseline condition assessment on, you know, condition of these signal poles. They were ranked, they're categorized, and then we started doing traffic signal replacements. We really had no program before that, which was surprising to me. So we started, we started doing a, a capital improvement plan essentially for signals. So that was step one, is to start to replace the, the actual structure. Step two in this process is then to start replacing the actual components within these cabinets. If you think of traffic signals, they're basically, you know, the, the structure itself, and then they're ran by a computer, just like your home computer, except a lot bigger. And some of these computers that are running these traffic signals are almost 30 years old. And you would never have a 30-year-old home computer. And so that's the technology that we're running on some of these signals. And so there's no wonder why we can't get some of these to program and, and run traffic efficiently. So over time, we've been trying to replace this equipment, and we've spent a lot of money to do that. And now we're to the point where, and last year, we've implemented a, a system called Sentrax, and I'll get to that in a second. Let me finish this, this point here first. You can see in the signal capital improvement plan here, some of the signal projects that we have coming up here in the next few years. We have, obviously, Burdick and Broadway, that's being replaced right now. We have South Broadway and 16th Avenue, that'll start here soon. And we have some controller and video upgrades that'll be happening here soon on a couple other Broadway intersections. But then you'll notice a little bit later in the, in the next couple of years, we're pairing these signal replacements and upgrades with projects that we're programming with NDDOT. And the reason why we're doing that is because federal funds can be used to replace these signals at 80% or 90% federal funding. So wherever possible, we're going to use someone else's money to replace these signals instead of 100% our own money. And so we may have to be patient and wait a couple of years, but wherever possible, we're going to use those federal funds because it's federally eligible. Now that we have several of our signals upgraded, we're able to program them by running a fiber optic cable through SRT's network into these signals. And we can run that data back to the Public Works Building and plug that into a program called Sentrax. And it's basically a signal management program that allows us to pull real-time data from, from those traffic signals. So we're always taking real-time counts, and we can do data analysis constantly on this. And that helps us to develop signal timing plans. And instead of doing like a, well, you know, in the, back in the old days, I guess you could say, we used to have like a, well, from, from eight to noon, we're going to have this plan, and from noon to three, we'll have this plan, and then from three to whatever, we'll have this plan. Now we can actually have plans that run from, from, in 15-minute cycles if we needed to. And we can be very responsive to the different traffic patterns that we have in different corridors. And here's a snippet of a timing plan that we have on, I think this is Burdick Expressway. And so we're able to respond to traffic much more quickly, and we can analyze that data as it comes in and out of the system. You'll see this little snippet up in the corner. Obviously, the, the goal is to have your rivals on green, right? When you get to the signal, you want it to turn green. We want the, the averages, 80 to, or, excuse me, 60, 80% rival on green is considered good. Minot's average, based on the data that we're getting back from the system, is at 88%. Now, the public is telling us that our traffic is not good in this town. So there's a disconnect somewhere that we have to figure out, why their perception is that we're having issues on our corridors. So we have to do some more data analysis on that, but I think the data that we're getting back from the system is, is telling us that we're, we're doing pretty good. I think there's some areas and pockets in town where we have some issues. We have some signals on the south end of Broadway that are not coordinated into that system yet. And we have some isolated signals that are off the system, if you will. They're isolated signals like at 25th Street and Fourth, Fourth Avenue, for instance. It's a lone signal on its own. We don't have data to that one yet. That signal probably has to go, be replaced anyway. But anyways, so we have some, some work to do, but I think we're making good progress. Sidewalk improvements, public is asking for additional sidewalk improvements. This is a, a snippet here, this picture, out of our, one of the plans that we created. This is, this is one quadrant of an intersection. You can see how complicated these ADA improvements get in a hurry. This probably took one of my engineers, I would say, a better part of three days or more to design. They get very complicated very fast, although they are quite a challenge. So our engineers like to do these because if you've gone to school for engineering, this will test your math skills in a hurry. So kind of, kind of something fun. But we did develop a, a new GIS tool here. I'm going to pull this up. You've probably seen this in the news here recently as well. City of Bismarck has developed something similar. But one thing that we wanted to do, we, we have a complaint tool already for, if you have a damaged piece of sidewalk, through the City of Minot's app, you can report that. We'll go out and inspect it and then add that to our sidewalk repair list. But one thing that we wanted information from the public back on is, if we're missing sidewalks somewhere in the city, or if, if the public wanted us to do a ramp improvement project somewhere, where would you like to see that improvement be made? We have a lot of area that we have to cover within the city, and we think we have priority areas. But we'd like some public feedback on where the public would like to see some of these improvements done. So by simply putting this tool out, the public can go to this. It's free. We put it on the website. You can type in your address. If you're on your phone, you can geolocate. The map here, in red is areas where we have missing sidewalk, green has sidewalks. So you can kind of see some of the trouble areas that we have in Minot. You can type in location description. You can drop a...
Are we supposedly seeing this, Lance?
We're stuck on the...
You're doing a great job of describing it, though.
Okay.
It might just be the way his monitor is showing on his laptop.
Yeah, probably.
He might need to do like a...
I don't know how to switch screens.
Try like the Windows button and Windows D or Windows...
This one?
And then the D, like at the same time. What did you do to get it? Thought it was Windows D, but I'm wrong. Far the head of the IT department now.
That's not saying much. I don't know where it's at. Pull up this website. You're getting my bald spot.
Yeah, she'll get it up in just a second. She was trying a, a different way. She was going to camera your computer.
Let her do it here.
I can show the team screen there and just camera your screen.
All right, the workaround. So you can type in your location description. You can drop an image or take a photo if you want. You can check the box on, on what improvements needed, whether it's a sidewalk construction or a crossing or both. You can tell us why this location is in need of an improvement. Any additional information you want to get us. And then you can also select if you want to be contacted. So want to be contacted by phone or email, or if you're like me, you just want to report something and you don't want to be bothered by the city, just hit, "Please do not contact me." And then put in your phone and email address, hit submit. What happens after that is it's then submitted to the City of Minot. It goes into a database, and then we're able to analyze that data and, and find out where some of these improvements are being requested. So we might have a neighborhood that, maybe that there's a lot of missing sidewalks. You know, we've, we've seen this where developments go in, and maybe there's a parcel or two that is undeveloped, and they need a, a link or two of sidewalk to connect a neighborhood. Or maybe there's a, a high volume of people with disabilities, and they really need a, a couple of ramps to make some connections. Well, we don't know that, but the neighborhood knows that. And so by us having that data, we might be able to focus our sidewalk improvement dollars to that neighborhood that needs it. So that's really the goal of this tool, and something that we want to unveil to the public, and something that I think would, would really be helpful to them. And it's something that hopefully, if successful, we could use to develop additional tools. Lost my mouse. We're back. Which is segue into some pavement management. So y'all know I like to talk about pavements. So we'll, we'll get into this a little bit. It's one of the main things that our department does is, is pavement management. So for those that don't know much about pavement management, basically what this is, is, is we're allocating limited pavement budgets in the most cost-effective manner. So I like to equate pavement management to car maintenance. We, we all understand that you need to do oil changes and rotate tires and do those sort of things to keep your, your very high-valued vehicle in top maintenance so that it doesn't fall apart. If you don't do the oil changes, your transmission fails, which is a costly repair. If you don't fix the transmission, then your, your engine dies, and then you got to get a new car. And pavements are the same thing. If you don't do your, your required chip seals and micro surfaces and patches and crack seals, then we get into these expensive milling overlays. We don't do those, and then you got to do pavement replacements. So for some Minot statistics, these chip seals are costing us about $7 a square yard. And if we had to get into the milling overlay category, excuse me, that's about an 8X. That's, that's $53 a square yard. And then a major rehab, so if we got to peel the pavement off and do a cement stabilized base and then repave it, that's double that. That's $104 a square yard. So getting to those pavements early, getting them sealed, patched, crack sealed, we're well ahead of the curve if we can, if we can stay ahead of it. And stay up here in this green category with a pavement condition index or PCI, we want to keep them well above 75. That's our goal in the City of Minot. Some statistics about our pavements. We have about 41.4 million square feet of pavement that we manage. About 90% of that is asphalt pavements, about 37.5 million square feet. Overall, we have about 55% of our pavements are in good to very good condition. So we kind of have a tale of two cities, if you will. We have a majority of our city that was built, you know, you think about it, we really didn't have paved streets until probably about the, the early 1930s in Minot, and then to about the 1970s. So that was kind of the first tranche, if you will, of, of paved streets. And then we have kind of everything after that. So we have some really old pavements, and then we have some pretty new pavements that were built here in the last probably 15 years with, with some of the newer developments in Minot. So trying to manage these two very different groups of pavements can, can give us some challenges. So that's why you see kind of these two very different splits on the graph. This is the number that I'm really concerned about. 20% of our pavements are in this poor, this, this 40 to 65 PCI category. That's a tough number to manage. That's, that's too high for a city of our size. We need to, we need some resources to try to manage this. It's common to have pavements in this category, but that, that's too high of a number. So how do we compare to some other cities within, within North Dakota? We're right in the mix. There's no one that's much higher, much lower than us. Everyone's about the same, upper 70s, lower 80s. You know, we're, we're a little bit lower than, than some of our comparable cities, but not much. A couple PCI points, you're, you're really not going to man, or notice the difference. Everyone's arterial roadways are going to be about the same in, in PCI quality. That's where everyone's going to focus their, their pavement resources. You know, it's kind of the needs of the many theory. You're going to manage your, your resources on, on the arterials. That's where most people drive. It's the neighborhood streets that are going to suffer, because there's less traffic down there. That's, that's pavement management. That's where you're going to put your dollars. Within the engineering department, the way that we manage pavements is we use a software called Paver. It's developed by the Army Corps of Engineers many, many years ago. And it's basically the standard bearer of, of software that, that consulting firms in cities like us use. It's very cost-effective software. Probably costs us, I think it's around $900 a year. And it's very, very model-based. We can put a lot of different variables in there, such as cost tables and things, and it can run all kinds of different scenarios. Matt King, one of my engineers, manages our database. This guy's a pavement guru. So if you ever want to sit down and, and talk different strategies or scenarios or whatnot, give me a call. We can sit down with Matt, and, and if you have different questions or things you want to run by him, be my guest. We can, we can certainly set you up with that. So let me just walk you through a few of these. I think it's helpful to, to understand what some of these different terms mean and, and what some of these different scenarios mean, because it kind of gives you a, maybe an idea of, of what some of these different scenarios can do, and just helps you inform kind of, of why we've recommended the, some of the budget recommendations that we've come to. So unconstrained baseline, what that means is, is if we had all the contractors in the world, and they're parked outside right now, ready to go, and Mayor Ross had the big publisher's clearinghouse check, and he said, "Lance, how much money do you need?" And I told him $240 million, and he was going to write the check. That's how much money we would need to put all of our pavements to a PCI above our, above our recommendation. We would, at the end of the day, we'd have a 91.1 PCI. So we'd have good pavements, everything would be... Everything would be done. So that's the baseline. Okay? And then if we wanted to do a scenario at the end of 15 years, because we can't do it all in five, the number would be unrealistic. So we have to try to manage this in a timeframe that makes sense for the City of Minot. If we had a budget of $17 million in 2025 and we wanted to eliminate backlog, which City of Minot's current backlog is at 36%, so that is every street with a PCI of less than 75 that goes into a backlog, then you'd need $17 million a year, plus $17 million plus inflation the year after that and the year after that, so it escalates. Okay, so just keep that in mind. Then at the end of 15 years, you'd have a network PCI of 93 and have a backlog of 1. And then you ask, "Well, what's this cost difference?" Cost difference is basically the backlog cost that you're going to have between the baseline and the time it takes to do all that work. So there's a cost associated with the different improvements over time that you're going to have. So basically, it's a measure of how effective is this model? Is it a good strategy to use or not? So obviously, the lower this number, this cost consequence, the better the model is. Okay? Think of it like that. Backlog elimination with no preventative work. So that is if we go back, we say, "Okay, we're gonna do all the milling overlays. We're gonna do all the reconstructions, but we're not gonna do any of the chip sealing or the preventative maintenance work. We're just gonna go and do all the heavy lifting work. That's $19 million a year. This is your resultant backlog and PCI, but you'll notice here that cost consequence, because we're not doing that preventative maintenance work, that inches up pretty fast." You'll notice the numbers here on the PCI. The stabilization of ADP PCI, $14 million. Budget of $11 million. We take our backlog from 36 to 26, but notice here, your network PCI at the end of 15 years drops from, we're about 77 right now. We're going down to about 71. So we're actually losing about six points under this scenario. Worst first, which is, you know, never the scenario we're going to recommend. This is the, think of it like this. This is the, we're gonna go on this cul-de-sac that has five houses on it. We're gonna replace the road because they're the folks that are complaining the most. But Broadway, we're not gonna do any work on Broadway because we gotta do this road here first because it's worse than the PCI on Broadway. That's called worst first. Okay? I'll tell ya, when I got to the City of Minot, that was the strategy we were under. It was worst first and it was like that for decades. And so we would spend almost all of our resources on pavement management, fixing these streets that have completely blown up and then we'd have no money left to do normal pavement maintenance like chip seals and patching and some of those other things. So we would fix these streets that have completely fallen apart. We'd have no money left to do the normal maintenance. So then streets that were in decent condition would just completely deteriorate. So one of the first things we had to do is rethink our strategy and try to get away from this worst first. And it took some effort to do that. We were finally able to do that. We really started to turn around the condition in our streets, but it took a while to do that. And of course, working with you all, educating you on why we do this and then getting the budget to where we needed to be, we really started to turn this ship around. And then the last scenario, of course, is the unconstrained or the stopgap. That's, hey, the city's really falling on some hard times. We really don't have any dollars for street improvements. So the best case we can do is basically a really large patching contract for a million and a half dollars and you'll see kind of what that gets you at the end of 15 years. So what's your recommendation? Well, my recommendation would be we need to budget at least $11 million. And why 11? 11 recognizes that we probably don't have enough dollars to get us to where we need to be, which would be, my recommendation at a minimum, would be to try to get to this $14 million goal, right? Because even with an $11 million pavement budget, we still can't get off of our arterial and collector network and into the neighborhoods. $11 million will help us to get over the inflation that we've been seeing the last few years. That's why I put those inflation slides in the read-ahead that I have because we've been paying dearly for concrete and asphalt price increases over the last few years. So it helps us overcome that issue that we've been seeing. It gets us a little bit closer to our goal of trying to get into these neighborhoods and rebuild some of these streets that have fallen into that backlog category. And you can see us trying to tick away at that over the years 'cause we've taken about 10% off of that backlog over a 15-year period at the end of this model run. But we're really not getting in there. So you're gonna hear this from constituents when they say, "Well, you know, 10 years ago, I needed my street fixed and they just keep coming in here and patching over and over and over again. Why don't they just get in here and fix it? Because we don't have enough money to get off of the Broadways and the 16 Streets and the 16th Avenues of the world to get into the neighborhoods to really do the reconstructions like we need to." In order to do that, you're gonna need at least that, probably that $14 million number. And to really make the difference that you need to get rid of the backlog, you gotta go up to 17. And then sustain the inflation increases over time according to the models that we have.
What's this year's budget?
I apologize?
What's this year's budget?
Eight. Mr. Mayor, members of council and candidates, that's the information I have for you. So if you have any questions, we have the answer.
Do we have any questions, comments, questions for Lance? Lisa?
Thank you. So, you know, based on your presentation, chip seals are much more cost-effective. How long does a chip seal last?
Generally, three to five years. It depends on the level of traffic. So in a residential area, you can usually get about five years out of them and like on a 16th street, they're usually good for three to four.
Okay, thank you.
We've been transitioning more to micro-surfacing on arterials because you'll get a better product that lasts longer on those.
Mark?
Lance, I know we've been through this before, but for those who may not know, because I think somebody recently asserted that, you know, we've got this $8 million and we're just sort of throwing it at the road, so to speak, without prioritization and so forth. Can you explain the process for actually getting all this data and how you know what the condition of the pavement is where throughout the city?
Certainly. Every five years, we hire a company and they come through with a van. It's full of sensors and lasers and they drive every street in Minot. They drive arterials in two directions, residential streets in one direction. And they measure crack density, rutting. They take photos of the pavement. And now in arterials, we have a test they do. It's called a falling weight deflectometer, which they measure basically how good the roadbed is. All that data is fed into this model. And then we use that data to basically rate the condition. That gives you a baseline PCI or payment condition index. This is all ASTM-certified data, so it's not something that's voodoo science. It's used across the entire planet. That's how they rate payments.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, you talk about, you know, $12 million, $14 million in, you know, additional funds and, you know, additional funds for striping. How much of that goes towards additional manpower? Like, would you need more people to carry out that work? We can give you more money, but if you don't have the people... So what, how much of that goes towards people and how much of that goes towards actual just cost of the project?
This year, my staff, we were down, we were down two people. We hired one right at the end of our design cycle. We were able to design out about, it was about $10.5 million of improvements. And we just, I mean, we just met our bid cycle. We didn't have any room to spare. Now we've hired one. We're still trying to hire an engineer. And recently here, now if you remember, we did hire consultants. We have them basically a service contract where if I needed assistance, we could go to market and we could hire a consulting firm to help us design a project. But just keep in mind, if we go and do that, then that's dollars instead of going to pavement maintenance. I gotta pay a consultant to help us with that. So, you know, over time, I think if we're going to make the investment in streets, then eventually we're going to need some staff engineers to help. Because this problem isn't going to be solved overnight, right? I mean, if you look at in a 15-year cycle, I don't think we're gonna get it done sooner than 15 years, being realistic here. Well, that's half of someone's career at the City of Minot to do this work. Now, if we're doing things right and we're growing the city, even after we solve this problem, this person or persons are going to grow into some other function at the City of Minot within the engineering department. We should be big enough in 15 years. We're going to be doing other things besides just pavement maintenance, so...
So my understanding correct? We have these positions that you would need. We have them funded, you just don't have them filled at this point?
I have one unfilled position.
Okay.
And with one additional engineer, we should be able to easily crank out another few million dollars in work.
Okay. Another question. We talked, you showed, you touched on the 25th Street, 4th Avenue signal. And I remember, I think it was that one. I think it was the one by Jim Hill. Maybe those signals really aren't warranted and maybe this might be a Stefan question. Are we looking to replace those? Are we looking to upgrade those? Are we looking to get rid of them and put four-way stop signs in? I mean, what's the future of those intersections? Or are we better to leave them and maybe do they qualify for funding even? Meet the requirements?
The signal at 4th Avenue and 25th Street is, it's probably not gonna meet warrants. So we're gonna have to look at a different alternative at that intersection. Maybe an overhead hawk or something different that would qualify. The intersection at Jim Hill, 4th, excuse me, 6th.
11th.
6th Street and 11th Avenue. I believe that does meet one warrant, maybe two. We're still working on that one. The goal there is to hold off a few years. In the CIP, we do, there's a storm sewer project that we're looking at doing probably in '29. By that time, the water and sewer underneath 11th Avenue is shot. The pavement and the curb and gutter is not in good shape. It's probably a full reconstruction. So we've actually programmed funding within the CIP to rebuild that corridor. So that would be the timeline to probably put in a new traffic signal if it's warranted. We've also looked at some other improvements there as well, but we're a long ways from that project.
Okay. One final thing. When we talk about PCI points, can you give us some information as far as, show us kind of where we were a few years ago? Obviously, we've tried to chip away at increasing the paving budget. Can you show us kind of where our PCI was, you know, three, four, or five years ago? And give us kind of some history, just send something out or...
We've been kind of floating around this, around 80. 80 and then we dropped a little bit. We went up by a PCI point or two, but then we've been kind of on this decline a little bit the last few years, which we predicted, right? Because we knew that this budget had to be probably in the teens of millions of dollars to really have the impact that we wanted. And we haven't gotten there. So we knew we were going to have a decrease over time and we're seeing it.
Thank you. Lance, when was the last PCI survey?
2022, so I think in '26, we're due for another one.
And when it comes to man, to striping, how much of that or is it mandated by either state or federal or construction? Is that crosswalks or whatever we have to do? I mean, is that, is it a mandate?
I need to phone a friend on this one. Stefan, could you come up and help me with this one?
Mayor Ross, members of council, that is a mandate. The, not necessarily the crosswalks and arrows, but the long line is, we are required to maintain a, what's it called? A minimum level of retro-reflectivity. So that's kind of why we've been more focused down on the long line, make sure that's up to date every year. And with that, we sacrifice the crosswalks and arrows, so...
Thank you. That's what I needed. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, how about candidates? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, you'd mentioned that we're starting to transition some of the chip seal stuff to micro-surfacing. What's, I didn't see on the sheet, what's the cost of micro-surfacing per square foot?
Approximately double the chip seal. So we're paying probably about $16 a square yard.
And what kind of a lifespan do you get out of that versus the chip seal?
It's five to seven.
Okay. So about double, roughly?
About double. Again, it kind of depends on your level of traffic and really what you're trying to accomplish with the micros. Like, we'll use those on your burdicks, on your 16 Streets where you're having a higher level of traffic. What micro surfaces are really geared towards is rut filling. So like last year, we did a micro on Burdick Expressway and on 16th Street 'cause we're seeing a lot of rutting happen. So instead of doing an expensive milling overlay, we wanted to do something to take care of rutting and some of the larger cracks that we're seeing. But we didn't wanna have the expense of the $50 some dollar a square yard to do the milling overlay. So in this situation, the best tool to use was the micro surface.
That's all I had. Thank you.
You bet. Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Lance, a couple things quick. Can you talk a little bit about what the decision-making process looks like for hiring an outside firm? And the example I've got right now is Apex with 16th Street. At what point is that something where, I mean, that's a big project. I mean, there's a lot of different partners. So maybe that's an obvious one, but where, how does the decision-making process work for you guys? Is it just a workload? Is it a size of project? How do you guys go about that?
Capital projects are always consulted out. So we have, we go through a request for qualifications-based selection. We have a committee. It's usually made up of four staff and one city council member. We put out a solicitation and we pick the most qualified firm. Council selects that firm and then we negotiate a scope and fee. So we do that for all capital. For internal projects like this, we follow the same process to develop a pool. And then we have, so in this case, we basically have all five or so local consulting firms. And then it's just, we kind of spread the workload out. You know, so Ackerman's done a project for us. Moore is gonna do a project for us. And then we, you know, Prairie's done some projects for us. It's just kind of who has some availability and then we just kind of spread the workload out. And it's really then just a component of time. Like easement acquisitions for some of these safer house of school projects, they take a tremendous amount of staff time to do. So that's an easy, an easy ask for us. We just say, "Hey, consultant, you handle this for us and we do the design in-house."
And then, and that's maybe a decent segue with safer routes, but maybe more broadly, when you talk about, you know, whether it's 8 million, 11 million, 14, 17, whatever that looks like, how much of that right now would be going to sidewalk projects? And really, I guess what I'm more interested in right now is when we're looking at ramps at, you know, at streetways, it seems like from what you just said, we've got a lot of time going into design there. We've got a lot of effort going into that. So how much of that's mandated by law? If we're replacing an intersection, are we doing that by default? Or what are, what's some of the decision-making that's going into those?
Some is mandated by law. So if we're doing a micro surface, a milling overlay or a reconstruction and there are sidewalks that are on that corridor, we are mandated by law to replace those ramps. So if they're non-compliant, we have to replace them. If we're doing patching or we're doing a chip seal project, we don't have to. If there's some that are on the corridor, then it makes sense to do it. I mean, we have the budget funds available, then we will. But we don't have to. So it's situational.
Anything further? All right, thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
You have about 12 minutes, Jason.
Take your time. Well, I didn't mean seriously, take your time.
Now what? Did you, Lance? Baby.
Here he comes again.
Who's coming? Huh? I usually just plug it in and it goes.
I did find out from IT, it's Windows P to extend your laptop screen to the TV.
They're trying to tell us we need to budget more for IT. Lance, if you're not happy with thirty-year-old computers, you go to, you must not go to Northern Break. My father-in-law's still running, I think, like Windows One over there, so. All you do is plug it in, last time it worked. Ben can load mine, he had mine loaded before. There we go. There we go. We got something. All right. We'll go. So Lance took all my time and he broke the computer. I apologize. Again, welcome. Oh, that's hers, not mine? Oh, okay. So it's not fixed.
Went it up the star.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so just to remind everybody, Public Works is now made up of two different, two different departments. The Operations Department. We have a group of very fine superintendents that assist Brian and I in making the operations and utilities department function. And then, then a crew of Public Works admin. Historically, when I've done these budget presentations, we've basically gone department by department and looked at capital expenses. And it's, it's probably akin to death by PowerPoint. It's, it's pretty dry material, not terribly interesting. So I guess I'll just tell the group, so when you look at Public Works, we basically do two things. We're either providing a service of some sort or we're maintaining something. So I have a series of slides and if you want to look, look through the slides at your leisure. Basically, I've lined out, you know, kind of our priorities, capital purchases, and things that we've done over the past few years. And like I said, most of the, you know, in order to maintain or provide a service, you need equipment. So we're either, you know, updating old equipment, buying new, more efficient equipment, or something along those lines. So I put together a few slides for some of our bigger, long-term priorities. And I'll get into those in a little more detail. So the first is NAS. So we've been hearing NAS a lot for the last twenty-plus, twenty-plus years. So the Southbury Reservoir and Hydraulic Control Structure is substantially complete. That's the large tank that you see, you know, about seven miles south of Minot. The Snake Creek Pump Station Project, the raw water intake that is currently under construction. They're doing some demo work and that's expected to be complete by 2025. The big part of the puzzle is the NAS Biota Plant. That's the large facility you see being constructed on the east side of Highway eighty-three on the south side of Max. Working with, so Biota Treatment is a, is a federal obligation through the Boundary Waters Treaty. So the Bureau of Reclamation is responsible for constructing that facility and operating it. They don't have staff to operate it. So through working with the Bureau, the state and us, the city of Minot is going to be the entity that's responsible for operating the Biota Treatment Facility. So we have a signed MOA, basically assigns all the responsibilities between the Bureau, the state and us, who has to do what. And we're currently working on hiring and training some employees. We have to buy some vehicles so that we can transport people back and forth and then we'll have to buy all the equipment and tools. And all these expenses are supposed to be federally funded. We're currently working through budgets with the Bureau. The federal budgeting process, I thought ours is pretty long and arduous, but theirs is, theirs brings it to a whole nother level. The, the thing I put here on the bottom is probably the big takeaway. We need to get staff trained and ready to treat water that we've, that we don't have experience treating using a technology we haven't used before. So there's, you know, we've historically, since nineteen fifty's, have been a lime softening plant here in North Dakota or in Minot. And the Biota Treatment Facility is, is different. But down there, now we have to meet some stricter rules and regulations with surface water treatment rules. So it comes with some additional reporting, some additional operational steps and complications. But one of the, one of the things that's gonna happen, the Biota Facility is going to be substantially complete sometime this summer. So what we're working on is we have a pipeline from Minot all the way down to Max. So water is supposed to be flowing from south to north, but we're actually gonna take some of our well water and we're gonna pump it south to Max. And we can fill some detention ponds and basically put about ten million gallons of water into that system. And it'll give us an opportunity for our staff to basically operate that facility offline. We can basically run water in a circle. We can test out all of the chemical treatment systems, the UV and filters and all this stuff. And basically kind of get our staff acclimated in an offline mode, which is really great. It's, it's not something that generally happens. We just did a major remodel at the water treatment plant and really like, once it's done and ready, you just have to flick the switch and see if it works. And so we're gonna avoid that. We'll, we'll be able to run this plant offline for a few months, waiting on Snake Creek or Lake Sakakawea water to come into Minot. So fingers crossed, knock on wood, do whatever you gotta do, but we're looking like Lake Sakakawea should be showing up in Minot about mid-2025. That's what we're gearing up for and that's what we're preparing for. So it's a little history, you know, this project, the first project broke ground in two thousand two. NAS dates back to the, to the early nineteen, nineteen eighties, I believe. So this project's been in the works for many, many years. We actually began serving interim water to the city of Berthold. They were the first customer on the NAS system back in two thousand eight. But some of the numbers, we've invested about two hundred and eighteen million dollars to date. We have another hundred and six under contract and we're probably about a hundred and, hundred and twenty, hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million remaining to be spent on some different projects. So the delays with litigation has ballooned the cost of NAS. The original, the original estimate of, of one of the NAS options back in the, back in the late nineties was a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So inflation, escalators, complications. So we're, the grand total is probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about four hundred and fifty-two million dollars. When you look at that, NAS is gonna serve about seventy-five thousand people. So when you divide four hundred and fifty-two million by seventy-five thousand, you get a cost of about six thousand dollars per served connection. That's, that's really not bad. You look at rural water systems, you know, they, they can have served connection costs, you know, eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars per, per customer. They have to run long distances to connect one customer. So then as a reminder, Minot has a sales tax and we're providing thirty-five percent cost share to the NAS project. Most River Flood Control, this will be a big priority next year and for many years to come. I always think it's a good idea, whenever we talk about flood control, to remind people what we're trying to do. This is basically the inundation zone from two thousand eleven and this is approximately what the FEMA floodplain is going to look like once the new firm maps go effective. This is what we're working to achieve. And it's many projects, many steps and many parts and pieces to make this happen. We're currently working on Milestone One. That is, it's basically on the west side of Minot, north of the Suris River. So it goes from basically Terracida-Valejo all the way out past Thirteenth Street Northeast. So we have Terracida-Valejo, Phases One, Two and Three are complete. Phase Five is way out, the East Project along railway, that is currently under construction. And Phase Four is in design still. We do have a sixty-five million dollar federal commitment on, on MI Four. It's been hung up in design for probably the better part of about two years. We, you know, the Sixth Street underpass, you have a convergence of the two railroads plus Amtrak. So there's a lot of difficulties on building a channel and bridging a channel with, with railroad. So we've been through many iterations. We, we've hit on a design that appease, that appears to be appeasing everybody. So we're, we're, we're doing some final checks on hydraulics to make sure we have the channel width that we need and that we can move forward. So I'm thinking, you know, probably in the June timeframe, there's probably gonna be a public presentation at council to kind of get the public up to date. There's probably some additional acquisitions that we're gonna have to look at that we didn't initially anticipate. So we'll, we'll be coming back to council to talk about those soon. Milestone Two, we started some design work on Milestone Two back in two thousand one. So MI Six, that is the, the phase of levee and flood wall that'll go from basically downtown over to Third Street, under the Third Street Bridge and then over to the, the west entrance to Roosevelt Park. That is gonna, bids will open on that on May seventeenth. So that project is going up for bid and that project will start, begin construction this summer. MI Seven, that is the levee and flood wall segments that go through Roosevelt Park. That open, bids open for that this Friday, May tenth. We just awarded MI Eight and Nine. MI Eight is the Burdick Bridge replacement and realignment. And then MI Nine is the Volker Road that basically goes from the Burdick Bridge south, ties in the high ground down by the old Cloverdale Plant. Then additionally, Bar Engineering was awarded a contract. So back in, if everybody remembers back in two thousand eleven, you know, there, there was this fast track to get the preliminary engineering report out so people could determine, you know, whether they're in a buyout area, you know, what was gonna happen. So there were a lot, you know, that was a very high-level view to, to give us an idea. So now that we've designed multiple projects, we've done a ton of modeling. We have some more certainty in how things are responding as we build, build features. So we're gonna revisit the PER. Bar Engineering's gonna do some more modeling. We're gonna do some geotech engineering. There's some segments that, where levee is drawn on a map. But when you start looking at the finances, it probably makes more sense to buy out some, some rural neighborhoods versus building ring levees around them. There's some things that are on that the Corps is probably not gonna approve for us to construct. So we're gonna, we're gonna revisit the PER and do probably, you know, bring all these projects up to about a twenty, thirty percent design so we have a better idea of what, what we're getting ourselves into going forward. And just as a reminder, during the last session of legislature, there is legislative intent to provide seventy-six point one million for the next, next five biennium. We've, we've been approaching legislature each, each session, trying to get them to, to ramp that up. We have the funding, we can, we can cost share a, a higher allocation from the state. But this is what they've given us for now and every two years we'll continue to go down and, and ask for more. Cast iron pipe replacement. As if NAS and flood control aren't enough, this is a very large, large project as well. So the, the map you see here, this is basically all the water lines in Minot. Everything in red is cast iron. So we have about eighty miles of cast iron pipes still on the ground. It's undersized, it's poor condition. It leads to poor fire flows on hydrants and water quality concerns. Now, the water leaves the plant, it's nice and clear and clean, but we have some neighborhoods where it's just deteriorated pipes. They have some yellow water issues. We have to do a lot of flushing. You know, so this is, this is a long-term, long-term project. We're gonna work on, on getting all eighty miles of this replaced over time. Whereas Department of Water Resources, they've been, they've been cost sharing on a couple of projects with us, so we're gonna continue to seek those funds. We get a sixty, forty, sixty, forty cost share on those. And then our forty percent will match with drinking water SRF loans through the Department of Environmental Quality. That's a two percent interest loan for up to thirty years. So it's a, the, the SRF loans, they're, they're backed with some federal infrastructure dollars, so they come with some federal, you know, strings attached. We have to apply David, David, yeah, David Bacon or wages and, Davis Bacon wages and Build America, Buy America, some of these things. They're not too arduous in, in the, in the water main projects. Most of that is plastic pipe and it's built here in the, in the country. We're currently working through a new rate model to make sure that we're building a sustainable funding plan, that we're not gonna get into a situation where we suddenly have to jack up rates. Want to make sure that the rates that we're charging are, you know, have this set aside so that we can continue to make these debt payments and continue to get this cast iron pipe replaced. So just for instance, in two thousand twenty-four, we're on track to probably award somewhere around about ten, ten, eleven million dollars between three different water main projects. And that's gonna replace about two and a half to three miles. So when you start looking at eighty miles, this is a multimillion-dollar, multi-year project. So we'll continue to, to knock these off when we can and, and have funding available and continue to move forward. So the big thing is we need to find a balance between funding and then the neighborhood inconveniences. We can, when we come into a neighborhood, we blow up the roads, sidewalks. We have to do ADA improvements. So they're very impactful and a major pain on, on the neighborhood. We try to get in and out as quick as we can. Things always happen. There are some inconveniences to the homeowner. So we gotta kind of size these projects so that we're not taking out every road in a huge quadrant of, of Minot, so. So this is the, basically what we've done here is we've, we've broken all of the cast iron out into zones of replacement zones, basically. And target, historically, we used to spend about two million dollars a year and we used to target based on whatever the water department used to tell us, like, oh, we did three repairs in, on this street in northeast Minot. So we would do a block of water main repair, repair there. And then we would do, you know, two blocks in southwest Minot. So mobilization and things like that were killing us on, on doing these small little projects all over town. So we've, we've taken a different approach. We're basically doing multi-blocks within an area. And then we're doing basically a smaller project where we're responding to some of these hot-button issues to help with water breaks and things. One of the things we have to worry about or be concerned with is scope creep. Once we get into some of these old neighborhoods, it's not just the water main that needs to be replaced. We have undersized storm drains. We have sanitary, old clay tile sanitary sewers that have root infiltration, cracks, collapses. You know, so we've been doing a lot of sewer lining. We go into a lot of these neighborhoods ahead of the, the water project, line the sewers and then come in the next year or two years later and do a water main project. So infrastructure, it's, it's a big deal. There's a lot of it out there and it's, it's expensive to maintain. I gave a presentation to council a few months ago, so I won't get too far into the lead service line replacement, but this is definitely an issue that we will, we'll be working through. There's a lot of new federal rules that came down on the, on the lead and copper rule. You know, so we basically have to come up with a ten-year replacement plan to get, the ultimate goal is to get all the, all the lead out of the ground, get it eliminated from, from houses and things of that nature. So we're, we're working on an inventory. We have a long way to go on that. There's a lot of new sampling requirements. There's a new trigger level for lead that'll probably push us into mandatory replacements. And then a lot of increased public notification. So this is a snapshot of our GIS map. Everything in blue is known to be non-led. Everything in red is known to be lead. Everything in gray is unknown. Everything in gray is unknown. So that's the issue. We're trying to get these unknowns to knowns. So we have about 8,000 unknowns. And there assumed lead. When we send in our inventory, there assumed to be lead. So if we get pushed into a 10% mandatory replacement, we're going to have to do 10% of 8,000 instead of 10% of say, you know, maybe we only have 1,500 out there. So we're going to have to put some projects together. And there is some state of North Dakota funding, 66% grants to do either in-home inspections or we can do excavation. So we can basically dig up a curb stop. And there, at that point, we can see what's on the city side of the curb stop and what's on the homeowner's side of the curb stop. So we'll continue to be working through some of these projects as well. Fleet maintenance, we are in the process of splitting. We currently have Brian Harinka is our shop and transit superintendent. We've created a fleet superintendent position. I believe there's interviews on Thursday? Correct. So we're currently working through that. We'll get the fleet manager on board and one of, one of his important tasks will be to start working on vehicle and equipment replacement fund. Historically, every department has kind of, you know, looked out for their own equipment needs. They put it in the budget when they need it. So, and it leads to a lot of instability in budgeting. You have, you know, me, for instance, you know, we can put in a compactor out at the landfill. It's about $1.3 million. That definitely takes a hit on a budget, you know. So we've been leasing some of this equipment. So it'll be up to the fleet manager to kind of develop, build a plan so that we start planning on a vehicle's replacement the day we take possession of it. And we'll start putting money away shortly over the lifespan of that vehicle so that we have funding set aside when it's ready to be replaced again. And then it should stabilize budgeting fairly significantly. I did want to touch on a few things in the customer satisfaction survey. This one is on trash collection and I'm actually, you know, proud of our department and I'm happy that the city has seen the benefit that we've put in. We made some major changes to garbage collection 2017. And those of you that were on council back then, I think you would all remember that there were a lot of people that told us this was never going to work in Minot, North Dakota, you know. And it works, people are happy with it and the project is going pretty well. Still areas for improvement. So we'll continue to try to tweak, you know, our processes and things that we have going on and try to make, try to make things better, provide that excellent service that Tom mentioned. Curbside recycling, again, a lot of people that, you know, said it wasn't necessary or is a waste of money, gets a pretty good satisfaction rating. So we're happy to see that as well. It's hard to read, but the cemetery gets high ratings. We're very proud of our cemetery. We put a lot of time and effort into keeping our cemetery grounds looking nice and clean and it's, we're glad to see it's appreciated. Snow removal is obviously an area of concern with the citizens. There's clearly a desire for some improvements. Mainly from what I see in the comments is, it appears that there's a general want for basically for us to get into the residential areas sooner. You know, so right now, if we get, say, about a six-inch snow event, we can get through the entire city in, you know, probably about 70 hours, call it three days. You know, so there's a desire to speed that up. So basically, I think what Tom's plan is with Brian, once we get him up to speed is this summer to sit down with Kevin and basically let's do a, let's do a review of our snow plan. If there's things that we can do internally to increase efficiencies, let's pursue those. If we need to get contractors on board to start working on residential simultaneously, that's obviously a resource issue and probably take more money. But let's explore these things. We'll bring them to council as part of the budget. And if it's something, something that you guys feel is important or we want to put out there, that's something that we'll make sure it's available to you. I think that is about all that I had.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, how much of the, when you talk about replacing lead or cast iron pipes, how much, how many miles of that, with that 80 miles or whatnot coincides with future road replacements? Are you guys always trying to kind of piggyback those? And when we're going for a road replacement, we're doing one or the other?
It's definitely a planning exercise that we go through. Unfortunately, there's a lot of bad cast iron under good roads, you know. So we're trying to hold off on those areas, you know. So we're working with Lance on how to make that work out best. There are some different technologies available. We've done some pipe bursting to, I would say, moderate success. I don't know that we've completely hit on all the things that we want in our specs to make sure that goes the way we want it. One of the issues with pipe bursting is, so basically you have to, you only have to dig up basically an entrance and an exit pit and then you have to excavate at each service line to reconnect. So what you end up is instead of like a 12-foot wide, 10-foot wide trench down the street, now you have little holes and then you end up with differential settlement. And it usually creates some ride quality issues. You know, there's ways that that can be remedied. We could do a bursting project. We could patch those back in, let them settle out for a year and then Lance could come in with like a milling overlay or a skim coat and a chip seal. So we're working through some of those issues.
Okay. And then just one more. As far as, we talk about flood control. We always talk about, you know, when it's done and it comes off the books, but there's still the operation and maintenance. Any clearer view on what that cost, that ongoing cost will be?
You know, right now, we have a $2 per month bill on the utility bill. That, that's not going to cut it. I don't remember what that raises. I think it's, you know, $200,000 or $300,000. Every time we build a new phase of flood control, that maintenance cost just goes up a little higher. So that, that's definitely something that we need to continue to work on to make sure that we have that funding mechanism so that we can continue to do the maintenance on these projects.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Jason, do you have any sense of what the new EPA PFAS rules are going to do to your water business?
At this point, I'm hoping nothing. We've done testing. We don't have PFAS present in our drinking water. It's generally not present in surface water so I don't think it's going to be present in Lake Skakowia. So at this point, I'm hoping it doesn't have any large effects.
Scott?
Jason, talking a little bit about snow removal and I agree. Every time we have a major snowstorm, we hear from people that, you know, want their areas cleared quicker. What is, so tell me, somebody asked me last year. So last year, we added some heavy equipment operators in other areas. Who is actually removing the snow and what are they doing when they're not removing snow? Can you kind of walk me through that process a little bit?
Yeah, so basically Kevin has a crew of, I think it's about 28 or 30 employees in the street department. And yeah, their job, you know, they have other winter activities when it's not snowing. We go down in the dead loops and clear trees. You know, we do what we can to find work to do during the winter. And then it's those employees then that they mobilize and run the sanders and the equipment when we're doing snow removal.
Steve, anything? Jason, cast iron, how much, I mean, do you have a, do you have a plan? How many miles do you try to take out on an annual basis?
You know, we're dealing with, you know, inflationary costs and things of that nature. So, you know, I think this year, this year is the biggest replacement project that we've done. You know, so we're getting a feel for what it's costing. I think we're probably going to have to go higher than the 10 that we did this year. Probably get up into that 10, 15, try to do. So what we did is we had a consultant do two projects. They're both about $4 million apiece. And then my staff internally, we have a project manager and some staff. So we designed about a $2 million project. So to do anymore, we'd probably have to have a consultant design like a third, probably. And that would probably get us in the neighborhood. For about that $4 million, it does about a mile. So that's about where we're at.
Can you talk a little bit about funding? How much of your funding comes from the general fund? How much of it, you know, attached to property taxes? How much of it, you know, is federal funding, state funding?
So in my current role as utilities director, zero comes from the general fund. It is all utility-based. It all comes off the utility bill. We're funded with fees. Brian, on Brian's side of the house, he has a storm sewer. Storm sewer is enterprise. So the rest, I won't say the rest of them are all general fund. The property or the cemetery, I think that's funded with about a half, a half a mil to make them whole. The rest is funded with rates. Yeah, property maintenance, shop, transit. Transit has a lot of federal funding that comes into it. Street department, property maintenance, and those are all general fund, general fund funded.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
I know that some cities, particularly Grand Forks, I think, have a sales tax separately or specifically allocated toward infrastructure. With the kinds of challenges you're presenting to us with the backlogs that you and Lance have identified, you know, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. And realistically, in terms of staffing and engineering and planning, this is going to take decades to fix. And we're not alone. As I've said before, we're not alone among cities in the United States. I think we're probably average from what you're telling me in terms of infrastructure that hasn't been kept up. What are your thoughts about that? I mean, we all want to keep the property tax low, obviously. And what would you think, though, of setting up or looking to set up a special sales tax portion to try to whittle away at this infrastructure situation?
Yeah, I mean, sales taxes, you know, it's never popular, you know. No taxes are popular.
Right.
You know, I guess the unfortunate part is, you know, along with all of our regular infrastructure issues, we're dealing with two legacy projects being NAS and flood control, which are both taking up sales tax money. You know, so if we can get those projects knocked out, we could obviously start reallocating some of those funds toward infrastructure improvements, which I think would be a great idea, but we're just-
With flood control, you're talking about a decade.
Yeah, we're away, yeah. And the plan is that once, once we basically get our obligation to NAS-
That'll help.
Paid for, we would dedicate that. I think that's been the talk historically is that we want to rededicate that to flood control. You know, so yeah, it's going to be a while.
You're talking about flood control?
What's that?
Rededicate NAS to flood control?
Yeah, at least portions of it. I know that that's, I think that's been talked about. Am I the only one that has heard that?
No, that's right.
Okay. Yeah, there was some, there was some talk about that. But we only have a half cent going to flood control right now.
Right, but I think we're looking also at hundreds of millions of dollars. And, you know, and that's something will be a topic for discussion later. But I'm almost wondering if, because we're so dependent on the state and the federal government for flood control, I mean, our sales tax is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, right.
It almost makes more sense to dedicate that to infrastructure and fix things up and so people's, you know, alignment doesn't break on their cars and stuff. You know, I don't know, and it'll be an interesting question in terms of the financial predictions. You know, what, you know, 20 million or whatever it brings in, what that would do. I mean, it seems that it would do a lot for infrastructure and people would notice it. Whereas flood control, we're again at the mercy of Bismarck and Washington. And, you know, we need to pull our fair share, pull our weight. But it almost seems like something more achievable would be worth looking at.
But yeah, and the other thing to keep in mind, though, is if we're going down to Bismarck and asking for money, we need to make sure that we have the cost share then to match that. So that, it's, again, it's balancing these huge projects with what's available, you know. As long as we continue to get some cost share dollars through DWR on water main projects, you know, they're covering 60% of these projects. It's great, you know. So I can do a lot of work with that, low-interest loans, you know. So, you know, nobody likes to take on a lot of debt, but when you're taking on, you know, I just saw an interest rate the other day for a piece of equipment at 6.3% and we can borrow money for two through the state. So that's, that's a great deal.
So I guess what I'm hearing now that I haven't quite appreciated is the extent to which we're bogged down financially and time and expertise-wise in legacy projects. I mean, they're obviously critical. We don't want another flood, but they just chew up everything.
Definitely, yeah.
I appreciate that eye-opening.
Yeah, no problem.
Anything else from the council?
Paul? Real quick, Jason, we talked about the ongoing cost of operation and maintenance. Not all flood control projects are within the city of Minot. Are we still going to be the ones maintaining them? Or is that going to be county? Is that going to be the jurisdictions in which they are?
Ward County Water Resource or, you know, I shouldn't, Ward County will take care of the projects that are outside of Minot. You know, there are, you know, there's bridges and there'll be some flood control up in Mole Hall and that would be Ranville County, I believe. You know, so those, those water resource districts will take over the maintenance, those issues that are within their county.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the candidates? Mike?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Jason, just a step deeper on NAS. So I think you said that we're substantially complete. I mean, there's, the major projects are done. So what now, what now does it look like for winding that down? Because we do have a big portion of one of the sales tax pennies dedicated to that. And so at what point does the council need to start considering action? Because there's no sunset on that as far as I know. We have to take action to change the allocation.
We just signed the new finance agreement with the state of North Dakota. So basically, we're dedicated to pay our share of basically like these last five projects that need to be completed. So there is a sunset on it. It's, Dave, do you remember what the number was?
29.
Yeah, so we think we should be done paying the NAS sales tax and NAS by about 26, 27-ish, maybe?
So there actually is a built-in sunset?
Yeah, there is.
So what does the allocation do when that occurs? What, maybe Dave needs to-
That'll be up to council, I guess, to, you know, determine where that gets allocated, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and candidates, there was a provision in the sales tax ordinance that authorized the finance director to reallocate some of those funds to the NAS project to finance that project through completion. Once that project is completely finished and financed, that allocation that is being directed towards NAS goes back to the original allocation of the sales tax spending, which would be infrastructure, property tax relief and flood control.
Anything further? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I guess at this time, we load up?
We're going to go drive around.
Go for a ride.
Do we have to take our stuff out of here, Michaela?
Do we leave things, should we leave things here?
No, Planning Commission doesn't start until 5:30. So can we get back this afternoon for lunch or?
Come back here for lunch?
Yes, we're coming back here for lunch.